August 29, 2025, Negotiation Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Mr. Sheikol, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Here.
This is Merkey.
Here.
This is Pep Rocky.
Here.
This is Gray.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Sub moving. Second.
Motion by Bill, and by Corey. Any discussion? Mr. Sheikol, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Merkey.
Yes.
This is Pep Rocky.
Yes.
This is Gray.
Yes. I'd like to invite everyone to join me in a brief moment of silence. Please stand and join Treasurer Mr. Todd Schinkel. We leave this on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Bailey, do you want to introduce the target area apartment updates?
Yes, so I've asked, obviously, our central office team to be here tonight. You've got in front of you a target area document. Just to kind of give you, this is probably 50,000 feet of the big to-do, or the big to-dos that we have from each area this year. They've been refined some, updated. Really what we have as a working document as a central office team is probably two to three pages on each of those that have the action steps. And really the steps we're taking to make sure we implement these with fidelity. But I've asked each, between Teresa and the other directors, to come out and just kind of talk quickly, answer any questions you guys may have as we go through these. But looking at this, these are, again, high level and, you know, we drill down into it weekly with action steps to make sure that we hit the goal. So without any further ado, I'm going to ask Mrs. Scherzinger to give us a high-quality instruction update.
Awesome. Well, we got preliminary progress. Score today, that's all we were waiting for, for our report card. And so our district maintains that 4.5 star rating. Yay, very exciting. We are a three-star in progress, which means we did our job. Three stars means students grew at expected rate. So I'm very pleased with our three-star in progress and very pleased overall with our report card. Obviously, high-quality instruction feeds right into our report card. We don't care just about testing. There's all other aspects of the education that you're going to hear about, student development, communication, college and career readiness. But preparing our students for the future is kind of our job and our focus. So a big portion of that is our instruction. We have spent a lot of time the last several years focused on our interventions with students, and I feel like that's going really, really well. Our target time at Mark Hook and Spalding, tutoring at the middle school and high school, I feel like that is, we've done a really good job revamping all of that. We're focusing on the classroom instruction this year a lot because what we have for our target time and tutoring is working. We're just going to focus on what's happening in that classroom with the majority of the time with our students. We have, I probably talked about this in literacy, we have a new K-2 textbook adoption. And that's always a learning curve for our teachers, for our students. And research says it takes about three years for a teacher to be completely comfortable with a new material. So that's something we're focused on a lot. We partnered with the company to send experts out and will spend time with teachers in the classroom. We have a coachly license for our teachers where they can meet with their experts and plan during their planning bell, like the next couple of units if they wanted to. So we definitely poured a lot of support into our staff as we make that implementation of that literacy series. So that's a big part of our work this year. Professional development is always important for our teachers, for our aides, for our administrators. We have a pretty good plan for professional development. On our in-service days, we don't ever really have just one speaker that talks to the staff all day. We differentiate based on what they need. And obviously, value added coming back today. We have a little bit of knowledge, but we really have to spend some time digging into that to see what population of our students are growing the most and which ones do we need to focus on a little bit more. So obviously, we are a data-driven district. We talk about data all the time. Our principals and our curriculum staff meet with teachers regularly as part of that. It's called RTI process. We assess, we figure out what do they do well in, what do they need some help in, and then we interview on that. So we're constantly looking at that data, and that's something we'll continue to do. And then something new this year from our district leadership team meetings, where we pull all of our grade-level leaders together and department chairs. They want to go watch each other teach across buildings, which I think is super powerful. So like, our second-grade teachers want to go see third-grade teachers. Our third-grade teachers want to come down to second grade, and they collaborate on what that looks like. And then fifth grade to sixth grade, eighth grade to high school, this came from our teachers, they want to do it. And I think that's really our teachers, they want to do it, and I think that's really exciting, because they could, they share ideas with each other, and they see the good things that are happening, but to actually see it in action in the classrooms is something that they want to start doing, so we're working on a plan for that as well. So, I'm pretty excited about what we have in high-quality instruction this school year.
I know that, you know, four-point-five stars is, I mean, our goal is five, we always want to be the top, but, you know, that's a lot of targets to make sure that you're staying on path with when you're starting to look at the achievement piece, to the value-added piece, to the gap closing. You know, our graduation rate is great, you know, early literacy, which Teresa will talk about here in a second, but all of those do come together, but you've got a lot of moving parts there in each of those, and our teachers do an incredible job. I mean, for Teresa to say that, for teachers to want to watch teachers, you don't see that in how trust a lot of districts to be able to put yourself out there and go do that, because that's, but that's our teachers trusting each other, trusting the process. It will pay big dividends for them to see and learn from each other. So, I'm, I'm proud as ever of that, four-point-five stars to be in the top, you know, percentage of the state that's getting that, and it's only because of our principals, our directors, and our teachers that work very hard to get, to make sure that all those pieces we're looking at, so.
The, the gap closing, I mean, that, five stars, I think that's great, we're really, I mean, that's going to pay dividends for years to come, right? Because kids aren't, you're bringing them up to where they need to be, and not going to get left behind, and then, at the end, it'll help us get the, the other components raised, right? So, you said it takes two or three years for new, for the.
Yeah.
For teachers to have a mastery of it, really.
Yeah.
You know, they're learning all the ins and outs of the new. Now, we piloted last year, and they had professional development as soon as school ended, and they had professional development again, and they could meet with their coachly, coaches, but it does take, the research says, from data, too. Data over three years, you can see that consistent.
So, they'll, they'll have, I guess, like, the first year using it, they'll have their, their lesson plan, or they'll have their lessons for the kids, and they'll say, okay, well, that didn't work this year, let's, let's tweak that a little bit next year. So, then by the second or third year, they say, okay, this is good, kind of.
And that happened with our math adoption. The first year, we kind of used the math, math textbook, kind of, unit by unit, and then we sat down with our teachers and we moved things around based on, there's not one textbook that's ever going to be perfect for our students.
Yeah.
And the people that know that best is our teachers, but you have to teach it first before you can figure out, okay, I'm going to put this unit first, because that's a foundational skill that we need, and, and they, they do a great job of digging into that and reflecting.
Thank you. So, on the progress, the three, so what, what is that exactly? So.
So, what value, what progress is, is, as I enter in sixth grade, my projection shows I should be at the ninety-fifth percentile, and did I score the ninety-fifth percentile? And if, if our students hit their target, that's a three star.
Okay.
If you exceed your target, then you might get a four or five.
Okay.
So, on average, as a district, our students are meeting their target.
With plans in, in place already to get them up to the three and a half or the four?
Yes, we're working really hard on that. It's interesting, because districts that struggle with achievement sometimes do really well progress, because all they have is to move up. Our students have been doing well, and so maintaining that level of ninety-fifth percentile or whatever is a little bit harder.
Yeah, so it's like value-added, then.
It is value-added. Yeah, they just changed the name.
Okay, gotcha.
Of course, of course.
So, if you start it up high, it's going to, you have a smaller window to improve.
Yeah.
I mean, I just look at this and think, honestly, I talk to districts all the time, and at the collegiate level, we also talk about, like, college and career readiness a lot, and I feel like our district across the board is doing unbelievable things, phenomenal compared to so many other districts, and I think, how is that a four? Is anybody in the state of a five?
Well, it was supposed to be a five, and they changed the formula. Mr. Dubs, don't even get him started on this, please, or you might be here for a while.
Well, we were a five for a while, and then what happened was, there were, as you mentioned, there were a lot of school districts when they ran the data that were going to probably be one-stars, so they kicked in kind of like an improvement component to bump them up to a two, and I almost think the compromise was, well, then we're going to make the top ten a little bit harder, so they moved it up to eighty-five percent, we were at eighty-two. So, that's how we slid back into the four, but we already know that we're going to be a five next year.
Yeah.
That data runs a year in the rears, so we've already turned those numbers in for next year, and then in September, Missy and, and us will go through and double-check everything, because she has an open window where she can go in and make sure there's nothing missing E-MS-wise, that all indications are, we'll be five-star next year with that.
Yeah, it just surprised me, because I'm like, I, I see a lot, what a lot of other schools are doing, and, I mean, independently, we're doing stuff that they're doing at county levels, right? And even exceeding that, so.
And what you would see on a lot of gray cards are twos, I think, threes.
Yeah, wow. And we started doing that before this report card measure, because it was the right thing to do for kids.
Yeah.
And now we just happen to be getting rated on it.
Huh, okay. Why is it, it's, so it's preliminary, when is it official?
I think they're just making sure, like, there's a time where we can go in and, yeah, look at our data to say, okay, that student moved, and they shouldn't be on our count or whatever, so as soon as that part's done, we work with Missy Smith a lot and E-MS on the reporting portion, to make sure all, everything we reported is accurate.
Or sometimes somebody should have had something.
Yes.
Connected to that student, and for some reason, it didn't get picked up in the system. Could be something from the career center occasionally, like, sometimes there's, there's some E-MS work on both, both ends, career center and, so they go back, we run through and make sure that everything looks like it's right.
Questions?
Teresa's going to keep talking on.
I am. I'm covering literacy as well, and I've already covered a little bit of this because of the new ELA series, but I'm going to put a plug in again, that the work that Danielle Stiles and Kelsey Ryback does is so invaluable. Danielle and Kelsey both have a coaching plan where they're in classrooms with teachers, co-teaching. Anytime a teacher has to be pulled for maybe a data conversation that they're not part of, they'll go in and teach those classes. They just, their, their work that they do with our teachers is amazing, and I think that's a big part of why our, our district is a four-point-five-star district, because they've been able to focus on literacy and really help with that instruction. So, we use our district literacy specialists in K through eight, and then we do contract with Hamilton County, and, and we have a ELA expert there who works on our high school English department. And of course, you know, we're going to continue to use data. Something we are starting that's kind of new is, our ninth graders in English don't have a state assessment. They took that away a few years ago, but Gloria had the idea of, we purchased an assessment system, just so that we can check the rate at which those students are growing as well, and so that we can have conversations about those students, too, who needs some tutoring, who needs a little bit extra help as we prepare for tenth grade. So, the district literacy specialists and our experts at the county are really good to work with our teachers, and I think our teachers feel comfortable with them, which is really important. I talked about tier-one instruction earlier, about how important that is. As I said, Kelsey and Danielle do literacy walkthroughs, they have coaching cycles where they're working with teachers. It's a part of just everyday practice at our schools, and teachers welcome their feedback, and they, they want to grow and learn, which I think is exciting. A continuing, continuing target time and intervention. We did change fourth and fifth grade a little bit at Spalding this year. In the past, they shut down the whole grade level into target time. We've kind of changed it to the idea of, those students that need really intensive literacy intervention will have it, but then, I, my teaching partner and I get to decide which, what our students need, because once again, who knows those students better than the teachers that teach them every day? So, I think the teachers are really appreciative of that time, too, to do intervention with their own students. So, we're going to try it this year and kind of monitor that data and see how that works, but I expect that'll probably look even better, especially with value-added. When you think about, if I took students that were from other classes, I don't really know them, I'm going to have to spend time getting to know them, but now I get to keep my own, so. And then continued professional development in the area of literacy, again, with that new ELA series, obviously, that's a big focus of their professional development this year. And Kelsey works really closely with Spalding and middle school ELA teachers to pull data and, and talk it through with them, too. So, overall, our literacy and high-quality instruction really go hand in hand, but since our governor place is such an important part of reading and literacy, it is the foundation for all learning, so it's important for us to kind of make sure we're focused on reading, comprehension, and writing, and all subject areas, too. Any questions about literacy? Obviously, our early literacy score is a four-star, I shared that with you earlier this year. As we look to the future, we have to start thinking about what impacts it could have eventually on, if we have to reconfigure buildings or whatever, but that's something that's, you know, we'll focus on and do a lot of research as well.
That's great.
Mr. Turner.
Yeah, Mr. Smith will help me on this one here in just a second, too, but just the area of student development's working hard to ensure that students have, have the safety and access and opportunity to become graduate, ready to lead, serve, and thrive. As far as safety first, it's always our highest priority. Our school nurses that are in our buildings have a critical role in helping reduce those health barriers to learning. We really value and will continue to value the Health Source of Ohio partnership to give us access to a school-based health center. Our school counselors, there's a bevy of individuals. We've got counselors, psychologists, community-based partners available to support student mental health, and at the same time, we continue to refine the programs such as Sources of Strength and PBIS, while ensuring that we meet the state requirements related to school safety and wellness. And in just a moment, Mr. Smith will address some of the physical and safety measures that are in place as well. As far as attendance matters, focused on assurance, ensuring that students are present, engaged, and supported every day. Our plan to address chronic absenteeism will continue to be updated. There are changes that are happening, both at the court level as well as the building level, and coordinating and aligning those will be a critical component that we do focus on this year. As always, it includes resources for our parents, it promotes student accountability, it works practically with the courts to reduce absenteeism before it becomes a barrier to success. Family and community engagement, we know that when families are engaged, that students thrive. We have family engagement specialists in-house, as well as we have a resource coordinator that we coordinate with, with our ESC that strengthen the school-family connections, and we continue to expand the resource coordination across the district in that regard. This year, as far as mental health team and mental health things, you will notice and see, you'll see a web presence that's brighter, resources that are available. Excited that it will showcase the things that have not only been in place, but will continue to be in place, and refine and go along, see things happening in real time, and we reflect on what went well, what didn't go well, what can we change. We will continue to respond accordingly. Hoping in the next week or two, I have an announcement from the mental health team, I do meet with them tomorrow, that we have a four-part parent program that will be focused on prevention and wellness, where we'll be able to offer education sessions to our parents and community at large. Again, I'm, I'm hopeful, and I do think we're right on that verge of having that available and ready to talk about, so we will do that. We are committed to creating more opportunities for students to lead and serve, while also building the stronger school and community partnerships. Mr. Smith.
In terms of safety measures, physical, technology-wise, electronically, in terms of the district, I'm very proud of where we're at. As you ever mentioned earlier, as I go to director's meetings, there's always conversations about safety, how buildings are equipped, training that's been conducted, and it just amazes me, we are constantly on the cusp of cutting-edge technology, as well as safety measures. We had, this summer, we had a complete audit of all our swipe cards for all of our staff members, so all those were collected, audited and reassigned, which does give us daily access to monitor each one of those key swipes, and if those cards are not swiped, and someone keys in this building or door, we have access to review that through two-hundred-and-eighty-three camera views that might be accessed if necessary. Our exterior doors are now electronically controlled, so each evening, three-thirty, buildings are unlocked to allow access for extracurricular sports that are in the building, and then electronically we can key at night, so that helps secure our buildings, someone's not actually having to physically touch those exterior doors each night. All of our staff members are equipped with the safety badges, which give them immediate access to administration should they need it, or emergency personnel in a more severe situation. And I think, as always, probably one of the most prominent and strongest safety features that we have on this campus are our two resource officers. Their daily door checks, their traffic control, and just their presence on campus is so impactful and helpful. It's probably on a daily basis with some older doors, notified, and we can immediately address that safety concern, but they do physically touch every single door every day, and that also allows them to be everywhere on campus every day. So, I'm very thankful for those two individuals being here on campus.
Question on student development, our safety. Thank you, guys. Mr. Dubs, with college and career readiness?
Hey, as Mr. Bailey talked about, you know, there's a lot of things we're doing, college career readiness, that are really in-depth, and a lot of these things, we're not going to change year to year, just because we don't, we don't want to make those changes, because the things we're doing are working. So, what I've kind of put up here is a little bit of like how we're constantly looking at, how do we repackage it, how do we make, clarify a little bit more? And so, this year, we've been talking about trying to get kids to understand three questions that they should be able to answer confidently, and that is, what are my strengths, and what are my interests, and that goes through all the assessments we do. What is my career path, or where's my destination? But the third one is the one I think that we're probably really talking about more so this year than at any point since I've been at Goshen, and it is, from the perspective of, does every kid have a trusted adult that they can go and talk to? Because it doesn't have to be me, and it doesn't have to be Stephanie, and it doesn't have, there's a lot of people that our kids feel confident with, that they can talk to about professional ideas, career, and those type of things. So, we're spending, I think, more time looking at that. So, for instance, there is a, a sports administration event coming up at Claremont, and so we were trying to decide, like, what students we should send to that. Well, we start talking to the coaches. The coaches know the kids, the coaches know what kids might be a fit for something like that. So, you know, it's not, it's, it's really stickman simple, but it's a little bit more of the sitting down and being a little bit more clear on what are you wanting to do, and I, I think that we're really starting to see there's more people as they get more confident with the whole idea of college and career readiness, that they can talk with kids also. Doesn't always have to be coming to the counselor, always coming down and talking to me. The, the, the second thing that I put up there, which is a big, huge change that we're really excited about, are pre-apprenticeships. When I first came to Goshen, that was one of the very first things, like, I wanted to work on immediately, was, let's get pre-apprenticeships going, because when you look at the graduation pathways, like, pre-apprenticeship makes a lot of sense. If you have a pre-apprenticeships that are approved and a student finishes it, then they don't have to worry about the two-hundred-and-fifty hours of work-based learning and, and tracking that, but we couldn't get any pre-apprenticeships approved by the state. The state kind of stopped them. Well, they reopened that, and this year, we are having pre-apprenticeships that are open, and we're really excited. So, we'll have kids that, that can work on pre-apprenticeships in construction, in IT, in healthcare, advanced manufacturing, robotics, so we're excited about that. And I think the other thing that's nice about it is that credentials are good, they're, they're a nice thing for kids to put in their tool belt and take with them and put on their resume, but in order to get a credential, really, all they have to do is take a test and pass it and show that they are, that they're, that they have a basic understanding with those things. In the pre-apprenticeship, there is a lot more hands-on, it's trips that the kids have to go to and network and talk with different companies, and, and then there's also baked-in probably more professional skills, and we're excited about that, too, because I think that's probably one of the biggest missing components that are, is that, as we keep working with our students, they just don't have a lot of professional skills that we take for granted, because a lot of times, things that maybe we did growing up, not all of our students do that. So, we're really trying to work on helping them to, to pick up those, those professional skills. We're excited about pre-apprenticeships, and that, that'll figure into that four-star or five-star, the pre-apprenticeships, if a student finishes those, that'll help up that five-star even higher. And then the next, the next slide, maybe, was, is about the BAC, and once again, we will have kind of a dual strategy. We're willing to be working both our local BAC, and then we're also a part of the Greater Cincinnati BAC. There's now thirty-nine districts that are working out of the Greater Cincinnati BAC. There's now 39 districts that are working out of the Greater Cincinnati BAC. One of the things that I know that Brian and I are really happy about is that we've had conversations with them that it felt a little bit too much Hamilton County previously. And I'm starting to see a real effort to make it more Claremont County. And two things I think that kind of show that is that, one, they're going to have one of the regional BAC meetings in Claremont County this year out of Claremont College. And the second thing is they wanted to have a representative from Claremont County, so they asked if I would sit on the executive board with them. And Brian was kind enough to say, yeah, go ahead and do that. And so we have representation now on the executive board of the BAC regionally, and there's actually going to be a BAC meeting in Claremont County. So we're excited about that. And you can see that we're working on a lot of the same focuses. Some of those are regional BAC focuses, some are local BAC. And then you can kind of see the things that overlap. You can see the dates up there of our BAC. We've got our first one here locally coming up in October. So I will be sending out very shortly those invites to everybody, reminding them. We've already had one BAC meeting for the region, and that'll be on the 14th. And as we've kind of talked about earlier, we are a four-star BAC locally. And we're actually the only school district in the state of Ohio that's a single school district other than the city that has a four-star. So we're pretty proud of that.
One question back. If a company wants to get involved in like the pre-apprenticeship, what would you advise them to do?
How attack me. Because what we can do with them then is they can come in and do some mentoring with kids, or they can open the doors and let kids come in and do a site visit and do some hands-on things. So for instance, like when we went to Ford, remember we went through your 3D printing? That was a great experience. We tracked it, but it didn't really count towards anything specifically. The nice thing about the pre-apprenticeships are we're doing all these things, now we're able to start pulling those type of things underneath those umbrella, that pre-apprenticeship. So yeah, any company that wants to be a part of that, just have them reach out to me and we can figure out a way to get them involved.
So on that, the pre-apprenticeship, how does that compare to the Oaks? Is it, because the Oaks, that's what they do, right? I mean, that's...
Correct.
So I mean, why? Like, I think it's a great idea, but why are we doing it here?
Well, because we have a lot of students that don't go to the Oaks. You have a lot of students that stay here at Goshen for various reasons. Part of the reasons are, you know, one, they could potentially get locked out of what they wanted because of the lottery system. Two, you have a lot of kids when they're sophomores, it's a scary decision to say, I want to go to the Oaks for the next two years. So kids, a lot of times, don't do it. And then suddenly, they start to realize, well, maybe I don't want to go to college. Maybe I do want to get into a trade, or I want to get into IT. And so by being able to run that here, that gives them more opportunities. One of the things the Oaks is doing, and I know Bill sees these, hears these things, is they are doing more senior-only programs at the Oaks. And part of that is a reflection of the fact that they're realizing that kids decide late sometimes that they want to go into those programs. So there are senior-only programs, and there are senior-only micro-experiences. Now, the only thing about those that is difficult is that, so for instance, if a student wants to do one of those micro-experiences for like, say, CNA, which is the old STNA, they actually have to go to the Oaks for like three weeks straight in order to do that. So that means they're out of all the classes here. We've got to work with the teachers and say that if they do that pre-apprenticeship here, we can do that here, and they don't have to miss three weeks of school. So that's kind of that.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, it's not that any particular one's better than the other. I think it's more about being prescriptive for our students.
So in July, I was up in Columbus with the Ohio Career Tech Education Conference. And if the Oaks are doing this and some other, they're working with other career candidates around the state, and some of the programs that are, you know, the most popular ones to get filled up the quickest, if they have a comparable evening program.
Yep.
Adult education.
Yep.
If there's open seats, they're allowing some of those seniors to get in those programs, which is pretty awesome. I mean, they have the instructor, they have open seats for those kids that do decide or didn't get in the program they wanted to.
They have definitely gotten more creative, and it's become more flexible with the use of that adult money and those adult instructors. And so you're starting to see those things happen. The biggest debate I see when I talk to career center people, and there's a little bit of argument depending on who you talk to, is what's the definition of after school? Because if a student is only going for a couple periods here, or half a day or whatever, like are they technically already done with school? And they could go in the afternoon and take that. So it's funny, like when I talk to different career centers, each one of them has a little bit of a different perspective on that.
And I don't know if I, did I tell you about my last, so I'm on Business Industry Advisory Council at Scarlet Oaks for their engineering manufacturing program. I don't know if I spoke to you after I was on that, but after our last meeting, but I was on that council, not as a board member, but as somebody that works in manufacturing. And I'm there, you know, a bunch of people in there, and they're talking about what these industries want. And one of the top things was the soft skills, professional skills stuff. And so I'm talking about from Ford, where I work, what we see with new people, young people. And then I said, well, and then I told him, I said, well, I'm also on Red Oaks Board of Directors. They didn't know that. And I said, my home district is Goshen, Goshen School Board. And then there was a guy, he lightened up, he's like this, he's like, we tell you, he said, I'm glad to hear you're from Goshen. Because Goshen, they just know, all the kids from Goshen, they've got it, they've cracked the code. Goshen knows how to prepare these kids. They have those skills, they have those soft skills, they do...
We work at it.
It's a good matter, but we're working at it. It was pretty cool. It was pretty cool to hear, because I mean, he was just like, yeah, I can't remember who he was with, but he works with all districts around Cincinnati. And he said, everybody wants Goshen kids. That was pretty awesome.
Well, and I say that, if you go back to the first slides about the report card and the college and career writing this piece, that takes a K-12 approach, and that takes teachers being comfortable with giving up a little bit of that time to do a lot of these pieces we're talking about. There is a lot going on that all kind of mixes together to be able to make this successful. But it starts with good leadership and people putting the, you know, the right position, teachers in the right position, kids in the right position to be up and have these conversations. So.
Mr. Bailey, one quick thing I did put up there, but just, you know, is happening. We're getting ready to have a county-wide professional development day on election day. That has not happened for a number of years. And Teresa conveniently like said that, hey, I support it, but then I get to go to those meetings. And it's been a great experience. And I will tell you that Darrell is a big moving part of that behind the scenes of getting the ESC and the other schools involved in wanting to do that. That's going to happen at West Claremont High School, because they're the only site big enough, because all the schools are wanting to do it now, so you can build for West Claremont. Everybody's coming. So we're excited, we're working on trying to get enough sessions to be able to have enough to handle all those different teachers that are all coming. So we have a number of our staff members who have already submitted to do a presentation, to do a session. Great, exciting.
Great. Is there a limited number of staff that we can send as participants?
Well, they're all going.
Okay, okay. So it's not like 15 teachers from each district in Claremont.
Everybody. That's why, that's why West Claremont's kind of the reason why that's how, it's the only place that really is...
Stay out of West Claremont. You don't need to go anywhere, just avoid that for a while.
Teachers going, then out of every teacher, we're trying to encourage many, many outstanding teachers, we have to do a presentation on something.
Absolutely.
All right, technology, education.
I'll stand up so I'm not hiding. It's a really great year for me, because through, I think, teamwork and foresight and planning and investment in our technology, we have what we need. So the goal this year is to get really great at what we're already really good at. Safety and security, number one, all of our departments, it is our top priority. When you hear Mr. Smith talk about all of the systems we have in place, really what happens is, he works with everybody who knows, and he says, hey, Mark, this is how this stuff needs to work. And I say, okay, let's make it work like that. And so we manage those things back and forth together. Really good teamwork. We also have really good systems in place that support not just our facilities and our people physically, but also online. And so a lot of work goes into making sure that we know what our students are doing and when they're doing it, and that it is safe and that it's appropriate for education. Cutting-edge hardware, software, and course offerings. We talked about some of this, I think, last month when I sat here with you guys and discussed AI and everything that we're adding to our classrooms this year. And it's a really good year, I think, to be a Goshen teacher in a classroom because the technology we supply to those guys and then train them on as part of our back-to-school process. There isn't anything that they have that they don't need in terms of their ability to deliver instruction to kids in classrooms, which is something that we are really proud of. We're also always creating, building, and delivering tools that are needed by the district kind of as things come up. Essentially, if we can't find one that meets our needs exactly, then we try to build one that meets our needs. One of the best parts of my job. Lastly, it's timely and applicable technology training. That, for me, is the biggest part of going from good to great. We built that technology explorers team at the end of last school year, did that work. Now I'm trying to do the work of working with my built-in integration specialist to be able to say, if we're investing in this stuff, are we getting the best return on investment, right? For our time, for our money, for our technologies? Do you, the teachers, know how to use what you've been given? Do your students know how to take the information that they've been getting and deliver it right in the classroom on the test, et cetera? And so those are the big pieces for me of how we can get through this year.
Mark says that, and I think you guys know, everything in this world has something to do with technology. So it always ends up falling on him, no matter what it is, and he balances it and figures it out. And that's why we're successful in a lot of spots where we are conceived. Figures it out, gets it done, and we move forward. So that's a small umbrella right there with a lot of stuff I need to... Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And then lastly, communication. I've asked Melinda to talk here on communication goals.
Yes.
Melinda?
I was kidding, I'm seeing where you're at. Look.
No, I mean, we've been working hard, obviously, with communication over, for a long time. It was funny, I was standing at the veterans thing the other night, and had a vet walk up to me and say, I didn't know about this. I said, well, I got to figure out how. I said, it was in the G News and the postcard, we put it at the local American Legions, we put it at churches, we put it... And I said, I don't, you know, that's sometimes, how do you get down to an individual level to communicate things? I don't know, but I felt bad at that point. So I think our goal is to always make sure that we're providing information about the district, celebrations of the district, but also engaging with people. So as you look at that informed piece, we're going to continue to try to improve the one-way and two-way communication, maintaining an ongoing content calendar for the website and social media, which Melinda's got laid out for this year, so we don't miss things. And we're, you know, we're making sure that we're staying proactive with a lot of our communications. We're going to continue to engage local social, local media outlets, provide news releases, invitations to the public, also to continue to improve our regular calendar of in-person community events. Obviously, we've got the veterans and the senior citizens dinner, and the BAC recognition breakfast, and state of our schools, which are going to morph a little bit this year into some of these pieces that Tom's talking about with parent engagement and getting parents into some of that, instead of it being one night, looking at it being four nights of us getting communication to parents and engaging parents. Not to mention that, obviously, we've got the master facilities planning process that we're still doing with SHP, even though we've slowed it down just a little bit with the purchase of the building and some of the renovation we're doing, and where does that fit in to the long-term picture of our district? But really getting community out to town halls, we've got a survey that I've, it's almost done, I'm thinking it may be ready for this Friday, just to hit parents with some survey at the start of the school year ago, and then also dive a little bit into our target areas and the digi knows of the things we're doing. Because I think sometimes, all those things that they just talked about, our kids see it, our parents probably don't notice it because it's just expected. But we do a lot above and beyond to make sure that our kids are successful and prepared with programming and different, you know, different opportunities that we give kids. I just don't want it to be expected because it's not. It is us making sure that we're doing the right thing for kids, but it's not what is on the state report card or, you know, the piece that gets measured. We're going to continue to vision, we're going to continue the enrollment and growth study and facility utilization as we kind of work through this. And then obviously, the academic offerings and the limitations created by space. So those are things we need to engage with our community about. So that'll take some time, it'll be overtime, but we'll get some opportunities. And then, you know, we've got, you know, to kind of create and brand that new building, the new administration building, including some logos and stuff up there so that it is seen as part of the district. So we've got some work to do there to make sure we're branding it. And then also, some of our interior wayfinding and stuff that we need to look at to make sure that as new people come on campus and we grow and expand, that we've got that way to be finding here on campus. If we do do any grade level configurations, whatever that might be, we have to really be thinking about making sure people do what they want. Questions on communications. That's a bigger one than that, but we're just really looking at continuing to form, engage, and then, you know, make sure that our brand is out there and people know what Goshen's about.
We do a pretty good job at communication, but I just think it's tricky in the state and agency in general, right? As a parent of the district and talking to other parents, you know, like this is a super busy time. So you think about homecoming and how many people are like, I didn't know this was going on. You're like, huh? But what I've realized is like, our principals take time to do the newsletters, and the newsletters are really informative. Like, if you actually read them, they have everything that you need as a parent. But how do we send that message, like from day one? Like, maybe an open house thing of like, the number one important thing you could do as a parent is to read the newsletter weekly, just because it summarizes like what's going on that week, but also in the future, and read anything that comes from your teachers, obviously, right? But I think, I think we definitely miss out on people investing in that newsletter, in the newsletters, and the newsletters are so great.
They are.
And if we're taking the time to do them, we want people to read them. And then secondary to that, the individual that you spoke with, you ask them like, where do you get your communication? Like, where do you live and where do you get your communication? Because I think we do a really good job on social media and that, but there is something off of social media that we are, like, we're not in some kind of circle, but I don't know what circle that is, because I feel like we're in so many different spaces. But like, how do we get to that?
Well, and that's the side, like for parents, I think it's one thing, because you've got them here in captive. They'll tell you either text message or email is where I get most of my information.
So do we text the newsletter out weekly? Is that excessive?
It's texted, it's that way. I mean, they do communicate through, they'll share that way. I know Wendy does. It's the way they like to get it.
Only Wendy does. But I read it because I'm, I'm emailing every day of my life.
And we can...
I'm talking about twofold, right? I think if we get our parents reading that newsletter every week, then at least most of our community in terms of rental, understand what's going on and are knowledgeable of what's going on. Because those are so great, they really are. Like, they help me keep my life clearer as a parent. But then secondary to that, I think, is this whole other piece. And maybe that's the, hey, parents, share this out to your communities and people, right? Like, share what's going out to your people, because we're all connected in different circles of people who aren't, right? Like, I have a grandparent that lives with us, and I think other people have that in their communities, but maybe they're not getting that communication. Maybe that's how we can spread it, kind of like the pyramid effect? I don't know.
That's something we're always looking for, and that'll be part of the survey question that we put out at the start here, is what way do you want us to communicate? I mean, we've heard the Facebook thing, to the Instagram, to that, you know, the Twitter going on that. So it is constantly evolving. I'm not ready to TikTok yet, so.
And actually, I think we already communicate with the TikTok generally. I'm good with that, although I think they'd love it, whatever. Did that individual say, like, did you happen to ask, like, what would you read? Like, where do you read? Like, where do you get informed? Did you ask?
I didn't tell him, I was listening to him, that his best source was those postcards that we deliver to every mailbox. Our D News goes to every mailbox in this community. So anything that's community-facing, like the senior citizens event, will be in there. We try to sprinkle in the big pieces of, you know, school district interest stuff. We try to sprinkle in the big pieces of community, you know, of school district interest stuff in there. But for that one, it would have been postcard that went to every mailbox.
I think, you know, like, I just drive through Loveland more than anyplace else. And, you know, they have the benefit of having a banner that goes across, like, for a homecoming. And they don't put everything. That's the only one I noticed. And they put a few other ones back.
We used to, back in the day, have over 28.
I think maybe that it's just a five-by-eight sign on, I mean, there's like kind of the four corners of the district that, for that and the senior citizens dinner. And, you know, you can have a banner or a sign in it. All you have to do is change that, the actual, you know, it's always, well, maybe it's September or October. Or, you know what I'm saying? You could pretty much make a sign and just change that little date.
And what I will say is you're always going to have one of us.
Yeah, for sure.
We do a, we've put a lot of effort into communicating and put it in a lot of different spots. So at some point, you just have to say, if you're not getting it, I don't know how to help you get it.
That's what I'm saying on the newsletter thing, right? Like, it's there. Somehow we have to encourage investing in that because it's so great.
Yeah. Was this their first time attending the veterans?
I think it was. I, I mean, it's the first time I'd seen him. But he was there, so.
Yeah.
Most of the people I saw were.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, I think we do a good job.
I think you see a sign for like, if there's like a turkey dinner, that's what you see, a sign like that. And that's older people, that's how they come. They don't get a social media post about a fish fry, things like that. They see a post on a sign. So I think it would be worth the, for twice a year. You know, Veterans Day and the senior citizens.
To me, our signage and stuff, yeah. We'll, we'll continue to work on all these. And I have complete faith in this team. We've got a really, really good director team here and building leadership and teachers. But that's really our, you know, our 50,000-foot view. It took 45 minutes to get that, but it's, it's well worth the time since you guys know the direction we're heading in with each of these target areas as we work, you know, PK 12 to get it done, so.
Good job. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, old business facilities update. Mr. Bailey?
I asked Charlie to be here tonight just to kind of, I sent this to you guys last week or my Friday update, my September update with kind of where we are with this. But just kind of kind of let, you know, we, I'll jump ahead. We had this timeline and we're slowly picking things off. And we're getting to that point where I think Charlie said that September 26th is PD. And so we're almost there. But I just kind of want to have him talk through the Mark Cook renovation and the administrative office renovation. And if you guys have questions. We've been through, and I will say, we've had, you know, central office and we've had some teachers at Mark Cook, obviously, the admin at Mark Cook kind of in flushing some of this out. So we've bounced a lot of things. We've talked to the ladies at central office to get some of their input as we've kind of done this. So it's slowly getting there with a lot of different pieces of input. So Charlie, no further ado, I just probably stuck.
No, that's all right. So Mark Cook is on the screen right here. The, kind of the gray shaded area on the left-hand side, that's the corridor. And then there's double doors that would enter into a more modern media center. So the media center is kind of a, as you can imagine, somewhat of a hub of activity. Circulation will go through it and that will connect to other zones. But it will also give the ability for the media center to flex. Everything that we've talked about that's kind of in the center of the room would all be on wheels. So if we need to do, change the shape of that room or accommodate the size of the group, it could be morphed. To the top of the page there, you'll see a couple restrooms. Those are where current restrooms are, but we would make them be more ADA compliant. It's kind of a hybrid restroom slash storage room right now. Dedicated, kind of fully ADA compliant restrooms. Off that is like a little L-shaped to the media center. And that could be an area where a small group or could, could collaborate. And then we have some lockable storage in there. Just to the left of that area, we're identifying as OTPT. And so again, it's an area that we have storage on the walls, some mats on the floor, and real, you know, the appropriate sized area for OTPT to be happening with, with kids in a small group session. Moving on down, you can see to the right, there's, or in the center of the page, it says storytime. It would be kind of salt seating where reading time could happen. I don't know if you've been in the Mark Cook or media center, but this, this space will be a lot more modern looking as far as color and just the amenities that are there. Today's media center is really just two classrooms chock full of bookshelves. And we're going to kind of make it be more, more appropriate for, for elementary kids. To the bottom, you see five intervention rooms. And those spaces would be for pullout, for math intervention, reading intervention, one-on-one or for small group. And so that's set up where that particular shaped desk is one teacher desk, kind of around a crescent. And then you can see one, two, three, four, five, about seven seats, about, about seven kids can fit in those for doing some small intervention work. And then to the right is two classrooms. And so these would be fully functioning classrooms. That would be off the media center where we're still trying to, and they're, they're very flexible in their nature. So they could be general classrooms throughout the year. They could be a specialized classroom if, if we wanted to do it on that path based off the enrollment growth that you're seeing here. And then lastly, in the bottom corner, says technology room as a current tech room today. There's a rack in there and then there's some antiquated stuff that we probably would get rid of. So it probably would become tech slash storage because it's a pretty good sized space. There's very minimal amount of technology in there today. So to the right is kind of, is what we call an isometric. So that's just a 3D view. And through the software that we have, some people can understand 2D, some people can understand 3D. So we like to show both, so.
Quick question. How many cla, general classrooms?
So I think we're at six right now, say. I think it's kind of when you look at the OTPT piece, the intervention from Title, the Project More, the media centers too, and then you're gaining two classrooms on that backside, so.
Yeah, so there's about six, six classrooms within the existing building that will open up, right?
And then there's no exterior entrance anymore on?
There's going to be one that's going to maintain, that kind of goes to the parking lot to the bottom. We don't have the door shown on this. There's a little corridor there. But the, the, the one that kind of goes towards the parking lot where you enter, administrative office today are probably going to fill that in for security purposes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks. That's great.
All right.
Exciting.
So this is the former Kinder Care building. We've worked pretty hard on this to program it and to really think it through as a modern school administrative office. So moving from the left kind of through into the building, you see the existing vestibule. That's there today. There's a couple bathrooms off of that. We would put a door in there to kind of create a gateway, a secure vestibule scenario would be created. You can then see the reception area. That reception desk has a location for two staff members. Across from that is another restroom. And then across that is also registration. We know that, that when you have folks move in, they're, they're frequent visitors to registration. And that's very typical in new board offices. We put registration right there so people don't have to wander through the offices. Just directly south of that, next to the reception is a, is a secondary office. There's, there's another window where they have sight lines to the front door for backup. If there's other folks are busy back in the mailroom or something. From there, there's a, there's kind of a doorway that leads to a corridor that kind of is an L-shaped corridor which connects to a variety of size offices. Some of the offices are a little bit larger. That's typical for superintendent treasure to, to have folks in to meet with them. And then you kind of have more general sizes, about 160, 170 square feet. Those are all scattered throughout on the exterior because windows will be put in if they're in a location where there is no window. So they'll have a window at their office. The mechanical room is central. It will stay there today. You can see an area that we have listed as open office. That's kind of like floating space. So as you may know, auditors stick, come in and look at your treasure, your books. There might be other itinerant needs of having other folks, you know, flux in from the county or ESCs, you know, camping out here. It gives the, the district's ability to have some temporary space or sometimes we refer to as hoteling space. That's kind of a term that a lot of businesses use. There's a closed storage room. We've done counts on all the files you have, trying to maintain that. And so that's a, that's a storage that's under lock and key. Moving up a little bit, we've got a conference room. It's a small conference room for about four people. It might be more of a room where folks could zoom, you know, a small group could zoom rather than doing it from someone's office. You can get up and, and have a smaller conference room. There's also a large conference room in the middle, kind of a 410 square feet. That's enough to fit about 12 to 14 people. So that might be, you know, executive session might happen there for, for a board, a board off meeting. Just north of all that, on, on the plan is a workroom. This is kind of a hybrid room where there would be mailboxes, there would be a copier, there'd be paper storage, envelopes, all those types of things, pens, pencils. You've got kind of a, an area to eat or if it's, if it's Thanksgiving, we can all put out crock pots of whatever in there. And then just north of that is actually a wet wall where it could be a sink and a refrigerator and a coffee maker, so. To the right of that is another restroom and then another storage room. So there's, there's actually four restrooms throughout this space. And then lastly is a, what we're showing is a multipurpose room. That room's about 800 square feet. It could be set up in kind of a teaching style if it was PD for staff. It could also be, you could see kind of to the, to the left where we could fit 48 chairs and four tables. It could really be set up so in order to have this room set up right now. So it's, it's a nice room. It does have a really good daylight and it has a direct door to the, to the outside. So some of those public-facing things are kind of next to the lot. And then the office are a little more private and they're embedded a little bit further, so. There is a little Axon shot, I believe that's of the office that's adjacent to the reception. Just kind of, we're at the point now of really kind of talking about functionality of, of, you know, are these people going to have one monitor or two monitors? Do they need, you know, an L-shaped desk, a U-shaped desk, whatever? And so we're, we're getting into the more specific details. We've had engineers walk both, both jobs. They've looked at the existing HVAC, they've looked at the existing electric, they've looked at the existing plumbing. So we're trying to get that next level data, putting that information onto the drawings, so. I think the one thing that we've identified here is the HVAC. There is under, below grade HVAC. It's kind of like a residential style. So there's two units and it pumps air kind of through the floor of the Kinder Care. That is actually the most comfortable for, for young children when they're working that low. The conditioned air is down low. It's still fine for adults in an office environment. But we're, we're cutting this off into a lot more pieces. So we're going to need to bring in a little bit more AC because it's kind of a puzzle to that. We don't have existing drawings of the Kinder Care building to know exactly where all that kind of works.
Not only your feet might be cold, the rest of you might be hot. Is that what you're saying?
No, we, we strive to have balance there, so. Yeah.
And I will say, one of the biggest changes we made in this was we created the first drawing. I forget how many offices there were. And I kind of looked around and we're like, well, we're building this for growth, right? There's going to be more staffing needed. So we kind of shrunk the offices a little bit to create more, so, so that there is room for growth.
Yeah, the first, the first plan, I think, had about 17 desks and now this has about 23. So we, we're, you know, we're utilizing it in a, in a very modern way of square footage. There's a lot of school districts we work for and the superintendent has an entire office, has their office, classroom. An entire classroom is their office. 800 square feet is their office. The treasure has 800 square feet is their office. So you guys are already kind of in a little bit of a compressed mode. So getting to these standards won't be that big of a deal. But we pay a little learning curve for some districts when they're used to having so much area.
Yeah, that's a whole access.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's districts that have abandoned a school and that entire school is a board office. It's just not very efficient, so.
How many people do we have in board office?
Well, I think that's what we were at with 17. And then we were like, well, we're already, if we add anybody, we're at max, so. That's where we had to, you know, look for.
I didn't see any office space for the current. It's going to be this, the school. So is everybody going over there then? So that's the plan now? Okay, good, good, good.
Yep. I think we'll have some space here on campus that is kind of our remote opportunity if need be. But we'll just have to kind of see how that flushes out where the growth is. But looking at this, it was just, makes sense. It's the best way to get everybody over there and let it figure it out.
I mean, to be able to fit two classrooms in that.
Yeah.
In that space without the extras, it's pretty impressive.
Do you anticipate moving, like, board meetings and whatnot to the new space or?
Well, I think, I mean, I love having them in here, but you can hold them in there. You could have it. You know, I, I was thinking like summer meetings or, you know, this, you know, but I think anything bigger, when we're having kids come in, I'd still love to stay here. But some of our, you know, shorter meetings, quicker meetings, I think you can just hold them there. Specials if we have, you know, something that we were having to do on that kind of things, but.
Yeah, contract negotiations, some sort of executive sessions because I would accommodate that easily, so.
Yeah. And the 22-plus program is a good spot for that. We end up housing that. So there's a lot of multi, you know, that, it's a lot in one area. But I do feel like, you know, it'll flow well and get us all up there, so.
I know you mentioned like professional development too. Is there any, it looks like that big room is, or the multipurpose room is like the biggest you can make it.
Yeah.
Is there any way to, it looks like there's the mechanical room. So you can't like have a flex, like, wall like this to make it, combine those two rooms in any way, right?
Other than like before school starts, we wouldn't ever pull the whole staff together except for like our breakfasts. Yeah. It's just so many people if you think about it.
Right, so.
So like, if we do a grade level at a time, that's plenty big enough. Well, for now.
Yeah.
Hopefully we don't get more than 50 teachers at a grade level.
Even sometimes you do like, you know, middle school and high school English teachers, ELA teachers. And so like, I'm looking at that conference room or like, there's a few different spaces where they could come.
Yeah.
Collaborate and even break off into little like hoteling spaces if they need to do some individual and then come back together or something.
It's really exciting because we have been like borrowing space from current county libraries sometimes. If we're doing a PD or, you know, we try to find a room. Sometimes we do it in Tom's office and you can know how small that is. Like, we're all just shoved in there, so it's super exciting to see that.
Thanks.
Good.
All right, we're still on track.
Schedule, yeah, so we're, you know, roughly, you know, one-third into the design of each. And so as Mr. Bailey mentioned, by the end of September, we are going to be at that halfway of 60% complete. We're going to hit print with everybody's data. So architectural interiors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology, furniture. And then we will then put it, give it to our estimator and we'll estimate both jobs. We'll come back to, you know, to make sure we're on the same page as far as like, as what the anticipated cost is. And then in October, start cranking into that next level of, you know, locking things in as far as the finishes and the furniture colors and, you know, all those kind of really exciting things. And then we really wrap things up around Thanksgiving for both. So we'll be bidding, we'll be coming here early November to, to ask for authorization to bid. We'll publicly bid both of these. There'll be two, two different contracts that we'll let out. And we want to get the admin office done first so, so they can then move out by, by about April 1st. We'll, we'll give them a real nice April fool's joke. And then that'll give April, May, June, July, and August completion. So a year from now, everything will be done.
All right, thank you, Charlie.
Great.
You got to go on.
Thank you.
Mrs. Scherzinger, are you checking that?
I am. I don't think, when I look, there's anyone.
All right, so new business A, participation. We have no one signed up. Moving on to new business B, treasure report. Mr. Schinkel?
All right. Well, you've heard everyone talk about everything that's been going on. Nothing's free, so everything talks on all this stuff. And, but it's great working with our team because everyone's ready to give and take and do what's best. So we all, I feel like we always do that. And so now we're kind of at the point where we've got a lot of our staff, we've got all of our supplies. We know what some of our projects we're doing, et cetera. So that's kind of built in now to the forecast. And I'm just going to briefly go through this and just kind of let you know where. And I'm just going to briefly go through this and just kind of let you know where we're sitting at. Just remember the five year forecast is our general fund only. It's not all, any of the other funds, it are permanent improvement funds, any of the grants, that sort of thing. So it's all general. On this, what I've done is kind of printed the big, from our five year forecast, the main pages. And just really sticking on these first two lines on revenue, unrestricted and restricted. With it unrestricted, that's our dollars that we're getting from the state that we get by monthly. And you can see going across through these last three years, we've 18,1, 18 million, 18,3. Going into this next year's budget, we're going 18,4, 18,4, 17, going down, going down, going down. And that's basically what the state's saying they're going to be taking from us is we're getting more from the state level. Or I mean, we're getting more locally, it's going to come from the, from the local. On the restricted, if you see here, we got 1.5, 1.2, 2.9. That's when we went to the CEP and we got everyone on the DPIA. That is restricted dollars. Then they, they're phasing it out like 75%. We kind of talked, I don't know if you guys remember, we talked about that a little bit. And so that starts going down, but it's remaining somewhat steady. Our total revenues, we went from 33, 37 and 24, ended 39 last year. And the big jump on these dollars, we put in all of our programs. I mean, as, you know, what we, our general fund has grown, but all the programs that we're talking about and all the services that we're doing, it's coming from those, those funds, you know, the new programs. And so the main thing on this right here is like our, our revenues, we're going to, we're looking at about 39 million last year. But we're also, that's, we're about where we're at. They're flatlining us right now. Now, a thing that we really want to kind of concentrate on is that the governor's got a team up there looking at property taxes. I mean, there could be tons of changes coming down the pike. So that's kind of where we're at right now. So what ends up happening, this is, are we within or without budget? So we're looking, these last couple of years, we were under budget and we're projected again this year. But if you look out here, with this revenue basically remaining flatlined, I mean, and we're looking at five to 10% increases in, you know, just cost of goods. That's what's happening to us there. The thing that's somewhat of a blessing is that our beginning cash balance for this year is 1607. So like on the next little reports, you'll see that number is our beginning. And then we still have cash in the bank. I mean, like a lot of districts, a lot of this stuff is happening. They don't have cash in their banks. They're cutting programs right now. We haven't, and I mean, you know, I look at this all the time, but I mean, you just don't know what the state's going to do. And that's where we get our main, main dollar. So when the growth happens and all that, I mean, there's going to be a lot of changes on our district on how that impacts us. So this, that was just kind of a quick thing on the five year forecast. So we're looking good right now, but I mean, like if, if everything kind of trends like they said in the new funding formula, I mean, there'll be something we're really looking at on that road.
But we're prepared.
Well, we'll have to start making decisions. Yeah. I mean, there's definitely decisions you have to make. I mean, there's just a lot of unknown up there. I mean, you look at revenues from the state, if that's, if we're flatlined and they say that we're flatlined because our residents, because of our valuation went up and residents pay more in property taxes. That's not our doing, but we have to, we don't know what that, what that looks like. Because that is a revenue that's unknown with the increased growth in the community. What does that look like? I, I don't have a crystal ball. No, I don't have a crystal ball to put that right there for you. So it's just an unknown. We know the state, well, we know the state for the next two years. So, or at least.
Even if that goes up locally, it'll take down the, the number from state.
You would think, right? That's the way the formula is if they, you know, if we're getting more locally. Correct. So.
Do you, do you think the 9 million, you know, if it were to stay this, the 9 million, would we look at cutting things?
We would look well before that.
Well, right.
I think that gets you.
Well, if you're going down 3.6 a year and 9 million is going to be a year, yeah. That's what I mean though, like at that point where you start going down $3 million a year.
Then it goes to six, then it goes to three, it goes to six.
And we gotta really start to.
We have to start making decisions in 2028, looking at that now, like as we head into that school year. And we'd have to.
And really like when we've got more money, you know, this year, like our period, we did a lot of work, you know, like Mr. Smith can tell you, we did a lot of work on a lot of things that we were doing here. So, because we did have the money to upgrade our system, especially like our automated logic. I mean, that has been around for a number of years. Well, like our computers, they just don't, they don't all always hit six. So we kind of needed to, to do that. You know, we look at when we have retirees, you know, the state changed it now that where teachers can get out, we got a few more people that's probably going to retire. So you get a newbie, you know, versus a, a, a top down person, you know, that helps save some funds too. And it's, that'll be something like, you said, we just look at it every, every couple of years and we'll just look at what can we cut if we have to. And I mean, that might be, we're going to put off seal and blacktop for a year, you know, some of those bigger items type things. So it's just going to be an ongoing challenge. I mean, it's something we've always done, but this is probably the first time where we're really getting, getting, like this could happen.
You guys have heard us say this before and you guys have said it on this board. We, we took on this purchase of the property because we had the green property sale and we had, you know, we had some reserves that we've been doing the right thing with energy efficient stuff and some dollars there. We cannot build buildings on a general fund budget. So it's just, that's not possible.
Well, we're doing a good job. We created, you know, six classrooms out of, out of that. So I mean, it's.
Yeah, we're doing the best we can with that, but you can't prepare for, you can't keep up with the growth infrastructure wise with your general fund.
That was just not possible.
Keep writing grants.
Next, yep, we're going to keep writing them.
So this, uh, this is the format we kind of went over last year a little bit. And this is our first one. Like I said, our beginning balance over here, there's that 16 million. This comes, this is right off our five year forecast. So fiscal year to date, we brought in $10 million. And on that, it's, it's always a big number this time of year because we're getting our income tax in July. And then we get our August settlement for real estate taxes. So that's two big hits of why our, our dollars go up, you know, a pretty good amount. Our fiscal year expenditures, I mean, as you remember, I always kept saying we're spending about 3 million. We're spending about 3 million a month. So, I mean, it's actually went up a little bit. We did more stuff, but that's our expenditures. And so right now we're sitting at 19 and that's just kind of a timing thing. So right now from July 1, we are up $3 million. So basically, last year in our general fund, we, at, at this time in August, we brought in 9, 9.8 million. Right now we're at 10. So we've went up 168,000. It's not like, you know, when you see that number of 10 million, that's a lot, I mean, that's a lot of money. But compared to what we got last year, we're pretty much trending down.
Where do you think Bill was going with that? Why does that graph, why does that bar chart look so far off for that?
I know, I know. I look at that, I think it should be at least 18, 19, 20, 21's up here.
It's a software.
I guess I could get a hold of Mr. Slate, we'll get some technology help on that. Sorry.
That's usually what happens. So like on this right here, the details of really what's kind of happened here is our local brought in another half million. The state brought in 1, I mean, 143,000, our federal 153,000 and then other is down. So that's kind of a quick overview on that on our expenditure side. So our expenditures, this time last year, we spent 5.9 million. This year we spent 6.9. That's basically all of the projects that we did this summer. And then salaries and benefits, I mean, it went up just a little bit. Purchase services a little and then other, which is basically all the programs there. So our total expenditures, that's our increase of $1 million bucks. Pretty much it. And I can run through that if there are any questions on that at all. All right.
I have to say, some of those projects, I know they cost money, but it definitely is an improvement to our campus. So like the speed bumps, the parking lots.
Speed bumps are phenomenal.
Repaved and then, you know, the lights in the stadium, those kind of things like, it definitely was a game changer and the appearance of our overall campus. So kudos.
Trying to keep up what we got, right? Take care of what we got.
I will take extra insurance for the epilepsy, seizures that we potentially could have.
You have to.
We did read it.
We did read it after the first.
After it happened, I, I know, I was sitting there like, I'm sorry, I was just smiling ear to ear. Like, gosh, what happened?
It's so neat though.
But it turned out great.
It will be before now. All right. Any questions?
Fix the graph, right? Yeah, yeah.
You explain them well, so we understand.
It's an increase of 2%, so that line should have been 2% higher than the other one.
Moving on to, um, new business C, financial items one through seven. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Lisa made the motion, Melissa's second. Discussion?
The only outlier there is number seven is the approval of resolution declaring transportation impractical. That's why we have students who bring the district going to another entity and we don't have the capacity to transport that. Are you, we're not going to create a new bus route, right? Because you don't know about transportation to that family until we have a big enough population.
Any further discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Werke.
Yes.
This is Pat Brockin.
Yes.
Mr. Rare. Yes. This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West. Yes.
Moving on, new business D, personnel motions. Do we have a motion?
She moved. Second.
Bill made the motion. Cory's second. Any discussion related to personnel one through 10?
Pretty much for personnel one through 10, there are salary upgrades for teachers that have master's degrees or continue their education. And a lot of substitute teachers keep trying. So hopefully there's a lot of them on that list that actually were certified by teachers who didn't get jobs in the summer. So we have, we've hired them as be a substitute teacher here, so.
I do want to recognize one resignation in there. Kevin Corlo from Mark Hook is retiring as a custodian. 30 years of service, December 1st effective. So Kevin's been up, face around here for a long time. It's tough for a place, so we do appreciate his service.
We get a little.
I know, I was like, what?
Midyear, so yes, we'll do one at the end, but we'll do one here.
Did he start when he was one?
Yeah.
He doesn't look.
Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Pat Brockin.
Yes.
Mr. Rare. Yes. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West. Yes. This is Werke.
Yes. Moving on, new business E, athletic personnel, one and two. Do we have a motion? If you make a motion. Cory, did you say?
Yes, second.
Sorry. Any further discussion?
But, uh, do we have a new coach bracket? We have one on the hook. We'll see if we're good.
Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Rare. Yes. This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West. Yes. This is Werke.
Yes.
This is Pat Brockin.
Yes.
We have a motion. Moving on to new business F, miscellaneous. We have a motion to approve the two, the two miscellaneous items. Donations coming in from athletic boosters, Goshen PTO, Love Line Express, and then the academic year 26 school lunch prices. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. So yeah, I think Bill got it.
Yeah.
Melissa made the motion, Bill second. Any discussion?
So those lunch prices, staff lunch prices, there's a lot of the calculator that Brooke has to do each year. And basically it took our staff lunch up to 505. We talked about, we said make it five and a quarter and we should be good for inflation of food costs for staff lunches for a little while. Thus being CP free for everybody, obviously doesn't impact our student lunches, but this is for staff lunches.
I do, do, do they get something different other than for those staff lunches?
They do salads and some different things where they can take the student meal.
I would just think that we could do better on that. I mean, I mean, I, I just don't think that we should be charging that much for staff tea.
I think the, and I agree, I eat the lunch every day. It's a, it's a space issue in our cafeteria is to cook for the number of kids we cook for and then to be able to prep a whole nother one for staff. I, I can look into it with Brooke. I know that when we've looked at it in the past, there's only so many implements you have to be creating of student lunches and so many staff. So you'd have to increase the staff for the staff to do it as well. So we can look at it.
I just don't think, I think we need to, to do something about it. Everybody's, you know, which is great, they're eating for free, but I also think the staff needs to be recognized and not paid as much.
Yeah, well.
Do they get more?
I, I don't.
A portion of this doesn't make me hurt, but a portion, yeah. Right, yeah.
I can look into it. I know she does, they do deli sandwiches and some different things for them, but I'm not sure what that would. We have to do some research and I know we've talked about, I guess I just don't know what.
I think, I think for that reason, I'll probably, I, I love the donations, but I'll probably vote no.
Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
This is Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West. No. This is Werke.
Yes.
Pat Brockin. Sorry, this is Pat Brockin. Mr. Rare. Yes.
Moving on, new business G, Board of Education report.
Um, Melissa. There, um, no real report for student achievement and there's no big announcements at the middle school. So when there is the first parent advisory meeting, I plan to attend that. So no real report for me.
All right, Bill.
I have a, a Oaks meeting on this Wednesday, last Wednesday we talked about the, uh, or license, excuse me, last month. So we, our programs are all, of course, you know, everything's full and lottery process. And some kids had to go with their second choice. Also have our, the public relations, you know, we already spoke about the football game the other night. That was, uh, it was neat having outdoor field tent out there and everything, good, nice weather. Thankfully, uh, yeah. Great event.
Thank you. Lisa?
Um, so for legislative report, the federal government and the General Assembly for Ohio have been in recess for the month of August. Federal Congress is coming back into session, but the Ohio legislator is still on recess through September. So nothing to report really from bills and whatnot being introduced. I did sign up to attend the legislative liaison monthly meetings that they have through OSBA. So I signed up to attend all of those. They're usually like the third or fourth Monday of the month, I can't remember which. And the, for Mark Cook, the pack meeting is later this month, so I'll be attending that.
Thank you, Lisa. Cory?
I, I do not have the, I've been so busy, I haven't had a chance to catch up with the township. But, uh, I mean, there was a big zoning meeting. And I think the, the message should be clear that that was approved back in 2005, right? So it's not the current board that voted on that. They're just checking, you know, to make sure everything is acceptable. So, but yeah, that was a big, big meeting on that, so. Other than that, no.
Thank you. And then audit finance, we will not meet again until January unless something setting comes up. Public relations, it was excellent. Veterans, military, first responder this past Friday. Thanks for everybody who attended. And other events I've shared with you guys. If you, anybody knows a veteran who didn't receive their diploma for some reason, we do have a tentative program set for November 10th. If that arises, so if so, please reach out to our superintendent and he'll get you connected appropriately. And then our business partners recognition breakfast will be on February 25th. Thinking ahead to spring, spring senior citizens dinner, March 18th. There was discussion at my veterans table about that and the excitement of the spring senior citizens dinner. So. They're already excited for March? And then there will be more to come on the bowling, the Chamber of Commerce bowling event and the volunteer appreciation breakfast. And then our Goshen Education Foundation has another great fundraiser coming up, Foods Bourbon and Barbecue. It's on October 4th. Tickets and sponsorships are still available. So if you know anybody who'd be interested to attend that, it's live on the website and on their Facebook page. That's everything from me. So any questions from the board? All right, moving on, new business H, superintendent's report.
Yep, I just have a couple of reminders and I know I sent you guys out a heads up on attendance. So I've got these, but we do have the Fall Regional at Borla.
so I've got these, but we do have the Fall Regional at Laurel Oaks, and then OSBA Capital Conference coming up. And then last month, you guys asked me for an enrollment update, so I am going to try to break this down for you a little bit. New enrollments this year, not counting kindergarten, were 125. So spread over the grades, we had 125 new students. Our JVS numbers, which you will see there, that's Joint Vocational, so it's kids going to Laurel Live and Scarlet, were up. So in these conversations that we were having, you know, with Pat and looking at the high school piece and some of our offerings, that does help us a little bit with space at the high school side with having, you know, roughly 25 more kids heading out there. And then here's the thing with Goshen and, you know, where we're at right now, with 125 new, we had 118 withdrawals. And you see withdrawals to another district, so we have a somewhat transient population in some of our, some of our communities. So I would say, you know, as we start talking about handling growth, if that 125 starts to happen in these new neighborhoods, and we don't see withdrawals, that is when we will start to feel the pinch of enrollment, because the enrollments are coming. Just, I'm not sure kind of where that withdrawal piece, and I've never, it's obviously on my list to monitor now, because I was hearing a lot of enrollments, and then you have to wait until you get into school to know where your withdrawals are at. So really, we're balanced on enrollment right now. Did, you know, I know that we've talked about open enrollment, I've got those numbers there. We're trying to balance that, you know, making sure, because we can't go backwards in, and I don't see us going backwards in enrollment, but you know, you don't want to see declining enrollment, because that's a hit financially, as well as, you know, we've talked about, you know, what the finance for open enrollment, what are the students, what programs that dollar provides here to us. So all in all, kind of flat funded right now, or flat funded, flat funded and flat student, that flat enrollment. I'll continue to monitor this, I mean, it's, you know, we've got a running piece to know where we're at. But again, 125 new enrollments, and then you saw almost just as many withdrawals, kind of flats us out. We'll see what happens as we go through the school year, as, you know, houses and these subdivisions get. Questions on that, is that the data you guys were looking for, try to give it to you by grade level?
But you're, you're, so with the Oaks though, yeah, we're up 25 this year, but we could very well be down 50, because that's still lottery amongst all of the districts, so.
Exactly.
Goshen had, you know, 130 points pulled this year or whatever, but could be down next year, it's just.
Exactly.
You know, allocated.
Those two numbers are junior and senior here, by the way, but next to it, so it's junior and seniors.
So we're plus 7.
Yeah.
Plus 7, good.
Yep. I mean, you will see, like kindergarten went from 172 last year to 196 this year. That tells me, I mean, some of that, and I didn't count that in with that, you know, to that number in the district, but so that age of students growing actually.
At another district? That doesn't necessarily mean they live here and they went to another district.
They moved.
They moved to another district.
Yeah, or open roll, but I don't, you know, our open enrollment, that's another number there. You see, we have, we have 50 resident families that currently open roll out. Well, we had 50 last year, we're at 47 this year. So there are families that open roll out, you know, to, whether it be Melford or CME or wherever, maybe some of their parents might teach and play that, but there are students that open and roll out too, so. You should look at that. There, I've said this before, Ohio's kind of turned into a little bit of an open enrollment state with charters and vouchers and all that pieces, so, you know, it's, it's, it is a revenue piece to an extent. Cut up the space, but that is a financial piece. It's two, it's still two kids in a classroom.
And while we're up 7, we're actually down 3.
Correct. Down 6, yeah.
Yeah.
Kid every, that's a big job.
Yeah.
So we had last year 121 kids in pre-K.
So preschool will continue to enroll all year by birth rate, so, I mean, Tom and I've kind of got a number in there of about 25 more that we're capacity for. Probably get those, because as you hit age 3, that's when that preschool piece starts to happen, so. You'll see that preschool number grow as the year goes, I should say.
So we're looking, so you draw a line from 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4, and then, so I mean, we're.
You can see where the growth pockets were, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not anything huge.
Yeah.
Kind of balanced across, yeah. Yep.
It's funny, there's a big, some big difference, like 30, right, between grade levels? I mean, I guess, maybe that's very normal, I don't know.
Yeah, it's crazy how.
What happened in 19, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, graduating class.
It's a snowy year or whatever.
Our biggest graduating class, about three years ago, it was, we had like 250 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that was, you know.
So again, these will, I'll, you know, I'll keep an eye on this, I'll, you know, if I see any wild changes, obviously I'll bring it back to you guys, that heads up on the.
So is it, what's our, is it the freshman that, with our big, our big class right now?
Yeah, they're 235.
Seniors are a big class.
Seniors are a big class at 232, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then 7, it's kind of big.
Yep.
7 is always big.
Kind of move on around, yeah. Good? Is that what you guys, yes?
Yeah, I like it. It's good, thank you.
And then just a couple other, we announced today that we had a homecoming route change, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. And talking with Chief Rose and with Woodville being shut down, and Short 48 being shut down, and us blocking State Route 28 for an hour for parade, I don't know that it's going to work. Unless it's backed up to Meyer or the bypass or 275.
Sorry, it's already backed up.
Yeah, it's already backed up. So we're going to take, go out and letting as normal, and then we're just going to take 28 instead of going, but we're just going to take a left on 28, take a left on Goshen Road, and then we're going to run it back through the high school to give people more opportunity to sit. I, you know, I think we were kind of hopeful Woodville wouldn't be opened, it's not, which that at least gives you a relief out on 28.
Right.
So it makes sense safety-wise, probably makes sense for us future-wise with as much traffic as on 28 right now. This at least allows them to use old 28 to get out. So they'll block it at Suburban Propane at that end, force them on to 28, and then down to Kroger and, or back behind Kroger, the ground area. So just wanted to make sure you're aware, we'll line up back in the back as we always do. Spalding Lot closes at 4:15, we've got all the goodies and stuff, just show up, have fun, walk and throw some stuff out, it'll be a fun night.
I think it's just a pivot for this year too, right?
I don't know, we'll see how it goes. Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, we'll see.
It's a 40-year tradition.
We'll see. And then just a reminder that we've got the George Drice Field, not this Friday, next Friday. That's kind of the itinerary I talked to you guys about a little bit. The 5 to 6:30 is the pre-event, that's for a lot of the folks that donated to the project, the family and former coaches and friends. And then we'll begin right around 6:35 with kind of getting the event kicked off, and we'll unveil the turf right there before game, game time. So excited about that opportunity and the partnership with GTF to get that done as well. So I think that is all I had. Questions?
If we have questions for. All right. All right. Moving on, new business I, executive session, do we have a motion to go into executive session for the following items, consider the appointment, appointment dismissal, discipline, promotion, devotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Bill made the motion, or second?
Second.
Melissa's second, any discussion? I think it's important to note that there will be no action taken after executive session. Any further discussion? Mr. Shinkle, can you please call the roll?
This is Werke.
Yes.
Paprocki.
Yes.
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Right?
05, 05.